All board members are present except for our student member. She's probably still at school or something. So anyway, she's excused. At this time, Vice President?
I would like to move that we adopt, that we, I would like to improve for discussion the April 2019 bond proposal, Proposition 1, which includes the capital improvement projects at 12 locations, including roof replacements and improvements. Oh, I'm so not used to this new setting. Okay, is that better? Can everybody hear me? Okay. So Proposition 1, the capital improvement projects at 12 locations, including the roof replacements and improvements, mechanical seismic safety and code upgrades, and school planning and design in the amount of 49.859 million, with the amendments as follows. Amendment number one was to, a motion to remove Abbott Loop Elementary School Planning and Design and Inlet View Elementary School Replacement Design Projects. And amendment number two was a motion to add $12.6 million for priority school safety projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
And with that, normally I'd read about testimony, but we have two individuals that are wanting to testify, three. Well, the first two would like to come up here, please, and have a seat and state your name and spell it, please.
Hi. My name is Jim Crawford. And, yeah, C-R-A-W-F-O-R-D.
And Jim, when you see the clock, but if we go ahead and get your name too, sir.
It's Ray Krieg, K-R-E-I-G.
Thank you. And Jim, when you see the countdown clock over here, you can begin.
Okay. I'm in the real estate business, investment banking and things like that have been for about 40 years or so here. I became acquainted with two things in studying your budget. The first is the roof replacements. And I was in property management for a long time. I replaced the roof on a sixplex for $18,000. You're replacing roofs for 100 times that amount, and there's no economic justification for that. I'd like to dig into that and see why. Secondly, the planning money of the $7,387, I believe if you're going to replace Inlet View Elementary, and by the way, I went to school at Inlet View Elementary about 60 years ago or so, and replace Abbott Loop, I'm concerned that we're spending $7 million bucks, and if the money is supposed to be reimbursed by the state, I don't think it is going to be reimbursed, and I'd like that recognized. I think this amendment that you had before you, deleting that is certainly appropriate. I don't think any money ought to be spent unless you've got an ability to either tax for it and you want to bring that up in bonds, or alternatively, you know, you've got a bill passed in the legislature. Betting on the legislature coming up with the money over the next couple of years, I think is a fool's bet. So I recommend against that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I wait for this to zero out?
Yeah, just wait for it. It takes it just a second. There we go. There you go.
Okay. I am in favor of amendment number one, certainly. I'm a civil engineer, and I also share in Jim's comments about these roof replacement amounts, they're gigantic. I haven't looked into that to know, but they just seem to be out of the ballpark. Let's face it, the Anchorage School District has got a credibility problem with the public. It is growing. We are probably in the upper 5% of per pupil cost in the country, and our outcomes are at the bottom. And that right there is a very serious lack of performance on the part of the district in giving people value, taxpayers' value for their education dollars that are being spent, and even more importantly, the kids aren't getting the education that that amount of money, you know, should be producing. I have a lot of experience in large capital projects. I was president of Chugatch Electric, and we sat with great frustration while the rail belt utilities utterly wasted $7 million in the state grant exploring the southern Intertie, when it was obvious to everybody that project would never be built. Most of that money was utterly wasted by Homer Electric after it was clear that all utilities were going to pull out of it. How does this relate to this? You've got 7.3 million that you're thinking about putting on the bond for schools that probably will never be built because of the bond reimbursement. Certainly, don't do it now. Wait until you see how the financially stressed state government is going to deal with the bond reimbursement. This looks like, you know, you're just trying to raise money to keep capital projects funded staff working on something which is just a make-work project. I'll add that I know someone that worked in your capital projects office for his whole career. He retired. He told me he never once voted yes on any school bond because he saw the waste from within the department. Again, credibility problem. So I would urge you, do not put this 7 million on the bond, and try to do something to regain trust from taxpayers and the Anchorage public in the district, spending money wisely instead of dissipating it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And then, Don, are you our third?
Do I get the former school board time limit?
Katie said two and a half minutes. Go ahead.
Chairman, for the record, my name is Don Smith. As you know, I served for three years on the school board, and I think one of the first things I got to do when I came and sat at this table was help to kill the West Anchorage High School, Romick Junior High School complex that was proposed for about $350 million. Absolute insane planning. And today, it's, that project should not even be ever considered. We've got facilities at work. I'm opposed to the 7 million for the planning of really keeping the planning office open. I think it's wrong. I think if you're going to have a planning office in the school district, it ought to be funded out of the general operating budget. The idea of betting on the fact that the legislature may give you some money to build something one day is, I think, is foolish approach. I'm also opposed to the additional money for the new school that is being proposed. Anchorage should be closing four or five elementary schools tomorrow. Realign your districts, bring the system back into a system, into a program that kids that live within a decent distance from an elementary school would be taken care of properly, and you could close probably five schools tomorrow. I know you don't want to do it, but I don't think the time that we're in today justifies trying to build another school. We just need to realign district boundaries and put children where they're closest to a school, and we'd save a ton of money and be no less efficient as a school district. The first thing that hit me when I came on board the school, the school board a number of years ago was the effort to try to redo the West Anchorage High School, when I went there, it was Anchorage High School, and Romick. And it was just, it was crazy. I mean, you can have dreams, I guess everybody has dreams of what they'd like to be able to do someday, but that was one that should never have gone, just like these programs. I mean, I think everybody in Anchorage knows that your planning office is funded out of bond money, and so therefore, you know, in order to keep the department open, you've got to have projects. But we're not in a time when we need projects. We're at a time when we need to start cutting back. You've lost tremendous numbers of students in the anchor school district over the last 10 years, and this is not the time to be building any new schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Hey, at this time, I'm going to open it up for board discussion, and what's on discussion? First is the amendments, and I believe the first amendment will be to remove Abbott Loop Elementary School Planning and Design and Inlet View Elementary School Replacement Design Projects. Ms. Hildy.
Are we getting a presentation?
Oh, we are, I'm sorry. We'll have our presentation first, and then we'll have discussion. Thank you for that reminder.
Through the President and through the school board members, thanks for the opportunity to spend a few moments to talk to a recent school bond survey that was addressed last week, and then really from that to open up for questions and discussion. Next slide, please. So to get to some of the specifics of the background of the survey, it was done this month. 1,060 respondents over the age of 18 all indicated their intent to vote in the April election. The demographics is representative of the municipality, age, gender, et cetera. Margin of error based on the population size for the questions where 1,060 people answered is plus or minus 3%. So just to provide a quick summary, before I do that, each board member should have been given a hard copy of the survey as well as a copy of the slide show that you're certainly welcome to use and take notes, make comments. So in short, the respondents were very positive to a critical component school bond up to or near the anticipated debt retirement amount of 55.1 million. 14% of respondents opposed that bond, and it did decrease from the previous year in 2017. When informed that the debt retirement has been suspended and that the district, because of the amount of deferred maintenance, would potentially need to bond over the debt retirement amount, the population, the respondents that supported a larger bond amount dropped from 72 to 51%. Of that number, when asked if the bond were to be below 55% of that number that did not support the larger bond, about 50% would, or 45% would oppose a smaller amount. 65% of the population strongly support a bond comprised of smaller projects vise a whole school renovation. I mean, it's a very, very strong showing, and I believe it's about 20% that actually advocated for a whole school renovation. I'm mentioning 61% of the population, given circumstances where a school had exceeded its useful life, 61% of the respondents said that they supported rebuilding that school as opposed to permanently moving students to other schools. 64% of the population of the respondents supported replacing older schools, given the similar circumstance of schools that had exceeded their design life and were expensive to maintain. 50% of the respondents support multiple smaller bonds vise a single larger bond. 59% of the population supported larger multi-year bonds, given the agreement that the district would commit to suspending future bond propositions for the next one to two years. And then, just if you'll note in your packet, there is about 20 pages of respondent comments to summarize what were the most common responses. They were in order, infrastructure and safety, teachers and classrooms, education curriculum, and security. So I'll pause for board members to make comment or enable a discussion on just the findings.
Yes, Ms. Hildy.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused on the voters who, it said 65% supported bond composed of smaller projects versus whole school renovation, but then the same amount almost supports rebuilding the school. Is there something about the question maybe I don't understand, or are those seemingly contradictory?
Madam President, may I clarify? So you're looking at three and four? Number three and four, is that correct?
So, so I, and again, this is my assessment of that. I think the way that question was worded with regards to rebuilding, I think it really kind of came down to, are you inclined to retain a school? Is it your intent or desire to retain neighborhood schools? Or given circumstances where a school can't be safely used, would you advocate school populations being spread out to other schools in the area? So it's a little different nuance than the first question about, you know, would you support a critical component bond up to or near debt retirement? That's how I interpreted that.
Two just independent questions, not linked together. Yes, Ms. Hildy.
I'm just thinking of it as it would relate to Abbott Loop, and maybe Inlet View too, but specifically Abbott Loop. How do I apply that analysis to that school?
So if I might, just to transition to, you know, what I would offer is just some analysis to the results, and I think it would get to the question that you're asking. So I kind of think, based on the responses, that the public is receptive to a bond for critical component replacement that is at or near debt retirement. That seems to be the trifecta. There is, I think, potential room to go beyond that amount, but to go beyond that amount, you incur risk or higher probability that the public would not support that. I think, and to get to Member Hildy's question, there is strong sentiment about the importance of neighborhood schools. And to have 61% of the respondents indicate that they would prefer to rebuild a school
I think that presently, probably more probable that just that the major maintenance, one that equals the bond debt at this point in time, would have a, a better opportunity. Kind of the, the way that we talk about our CIP and our bond, you know, the CIP really talks about needs. The bond is what can you sell?
So I would add too, when you read, when I read the question for question number three, I mean, it pretty much, it will not be able to, we're just talking, we're saying it's not going to be substantially managed, the backing of capital improvement work needed, which averages between 40, 80 million each year. Knowing this, do you support a bond proposal over 55.1 million? And that's for small projects. But if you look at, let me find it. If you look at question six, it says, as a voter, do you prefer whole school renovations that address all the schools' needs at one time? Or a series of smaller projects spread to schools throughout the district that addresses immediate component needs? So even though we asked that one question that was very specific, number six actually asked, which do you prefer? And in that case, smaller projects addressing immediate needs is the one that was the highest. I don't know if that helps, but, yeah. Any other questions on this amendment? Mr. Foster?
I'm asking the superintendent, how do you read the response to question seven? With respect to, do we relocate students or repair buildings in the current climate?
And I'm going to read the question just for the audience. And it says, over the next five years, when neighborhood schools are past their useful life or declared unsafe, should the Anchorage School District close those schools and permanently move those students to other schools? Or present the voters with bond requests to rebuild those schools each year over the next five years?
Well, how do I, how do I read it? I mean, two-thirds to one-third are saying they support their schools rebuilding their schools.
And the proposal that came before us, you had a chance to review that and approve Inlet View and Abbott Loop. And does this sort of reinforce or detract from that initial proposal in your view?
You know, it reinforces that the core value to me, I mean, this is just me just reading into it and trying to look at the tea leaves, right? It, it reinforces that we do have community schools and people believe in their community schools with this question. But the entire picture shared with, so I, I look at as a superintendent of not just putting forward a bond, but actually getting a bond passed. And so I would continue with our work with our CIP and our planning. I think there were some suggestions from the board about how we, you know, thought about some things that we could look into, that we continued supporting our schools and rebuilding them. But if I were to say, come April, very few months into the future, with a change in, in government, a change, you know, the bond debt is not put back yet, I would say that the likelihood of passing a bond where folks didn't know whether there was money in there for school or not would be difficult. You know, I guess when we went to pass a bond later on for those schools, if we only had certain component like the design done, and we couldn't pass at the second level, I think our ability to sell future bonds would come into question, the, the trust of that. So if we have a project to be planned, right, we're going to put that $7 million, whatever, into it. And then the next time we can't pass it, then that $7 million is like, well, we didn't spend well, or we didn't plan well. I think we all need to be on the same page with a forward-thinking plan of the district to, so that we all can support a bond as well. Because presently, I think there's a dichotomy of thought, and that will not bode well for the district in the future. But, but your question was, do people support their schools? Absolutely. They support their neighborhood schools. They want them kept. They, they don't want this mass cutting up of the district. But at the same time, I read that perhaps their financial ability to pass a bond is still shaky, similar to where it was last year.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I am just not 100% sure. I know they're worded a little differently. But question seven and question eight feel like they're basically getting at the same issue, whether people are willing to consider a large bond for replacing a school. So can you just explain what the difference is there, what the intent was? Question seven was, should, should we close schools that are past their useful life, or should we replace them? And question eight is, would you support replacing older schools that have exceeded their design life and are expensive to maintain? Is one more schools that are actually functionally not, that are wearing out versus aren't designed up to current standards?
Through, through the President. I, I didn't read into it, I guess, in, in that way. The way I, I see it, it seems to be a continuation on a, a common theme. You know, how, how do you value your neighborhood school? Would you rebuild it? Yes or no? Or would you be willing to replace it? And I think by inference, if you, if you talk about replacing a school, it's more expensive. So, so I, I think, you know, what, what's kind of interesting there is you have a higher percentage that would replace a school, which would probably be a more expensive project than rebuilding a school.
Okay. I, I misunderstood what rebuild means. To be rebuilt means to, the same thing as replace.
To renovate an existing building.
So rebuild means renovate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? This survey was put together, the questions, everything, were done by Hays Research Group?
We, through, to the President, we did provide a, a list of questions to Hays, and they, they did modify those questions based on their experience. But, but generally speaking, these were provided to them from the district, and they very closely parallel the questions that were asked last year.
Mr. Holloman?
And, and I was just going to say, on question seven and eight, in a way, it's the same question. And you get about the same results if you add the categories together. So there's a certain level of consistency in how people answered that. I mean, it's a, it's kind of the same question asked two different ways with different sets of answers. But the people that support rebuilding a school is about 60%, and the people opposed to it is about 17 or 18.
Ms. Hildy?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, is, is it a big delay if the planning goes close in time to the construction? Say they're on a multi-year bond together? Does it have to be a big span of time in between the planning to construction phase? I'm concerned of, you know, delay aspect.
Madam President, my understanding, and I could ask Tom, I, I believe it gets us more, when we plan and have that planning done, it allows us to be more accurate with the ask of the, of the amount for the bond.
Through, through the President, that, that's correct.
Mr. Donlin?
I had a couple of other questions on a little different vein. First, the, I, I have heard that the district over the last decade downsized the capacity limit for Inlet View. Do you know what the Inlet View, the district's judgment of capacity of Inlet View was a decade ago? And when it changed and why it changed, it was reduced by about 70 students.
Through, through the President, I, I do not know. I don't know what the capacity numbers were 10 years ago, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
And I can't, I don't have any documentation on that. I was just curious if you knew about that, if that did in fact happen.
I, I would, I would offer again, you know, the capacity, there, there are two, there really, there are two factors. And what, what we, what we use for these numbers are, are program capacity, which are not just the, the physical floor space of a building, but it's also the, the programs that are offered within, within the school. Some, some programs take, take a special need. Of course, as an example, you have a fewer students in a, in a teaching space. That will lower the programmatic capacity of a school, even though the physical infrastructure may not change at all. So I, I can only surmise that if there are reductions or were reductions over time, that they would have been related to programs that were either added to or eliminated from Inlet View.
I have a few more questions. So I think it was, it must have been almost 20 years ago that the school that Aquarian Charter School is physically in right now was surplus by the district. At the time, there was a representation that it was not savable, that it should be just torn down. And it would cost too much to maintain it, much similar to the arguments that are being made about Abbott Loop and Inlet View. Instead, it was offered up to Aquarian Charter School, who moved in there and have been apparently successfully operating there for almost two decades. Why would we want to tear down these two schools? What's different about these two schools from the school that Aquarian is currently in that makes them so that we want to tear them down rather than to offer them to charter schools who could, through their payments that they get, maintain them themselves?
Through, through the President, I, I can certainly respond to that. And, and with regards to Aquarian at the time, the, the district did surplus that, that school. It was occupied by Aquarian. You're right, they've done, they've done great. But I would tell you that that building really is at the end of its useful life. And quite frankly, there are millions of dollars that, that are stacking up to, to bring that school up to a, an acceptable standard. With regards to Inlet View and Abbott Loop, the district is not proposing to surplus either of these programs. Inlet View's got a capacity that, that falls well below not just, not just the current pro, or the, the current student population, but where you just factor in the kids that live in the neighborhood that are in that Casman area. The school is still too small to accommodate that. It's a, it's a vibrant, dynamic, successful program. Abbott Loop, again, it's a, it's a school that, that, that has a dynamic, potentially growing neighborhood in the future. It's a Title I school. It's successful, but it's in a, it's in a dilapidated building that's expensive to maintain. We, we think, I mean, what we've proposed through Dr. Bishop to the board is that it is a school that is a worthy candidate to be replaced. And, you know, we can certainly discuss a number of reasons, you know, why we think that to be the case.
I guess that, the question is that, my understanding is the same basic arguments were presented to the board 20 years ago about where Aquarian is now. And they've gotten multi-decades' use out of it since then as a school. There's another, I mean, so the alternative would not be to just do away with these schools, but possibly to maintain the existing structures and build a new school, rather than going through all the expense of tearing one down and building a new one if you could find a footprint for one in a reasonable location. I wanted to dive in a little bit too. There was another school that was surplus by the district, and it's the Spinard area, the old Woodland Park School, which became the Boys and Girls Club in Spinard. That was another building that at the time, they said, well, this is no longer occupable. Can't save this building. It's cheaper just to surplus it. But it's, although it's not a school, it still serves for children to occupy now for the Boys and Girls Club for, I guess, at least a couple decades more there also. And it seems like they're able to maintain it and keep it open. And it's an asset to the community as the Boys and Girls Club. So my point is that maybe these schools have a lot more life left in them. There's two examples right there of where the analysis was made at the time by the district. Well, we don't want this anymore. We need something else. But have found very useful, you know, uses in the community rather than tearing them down.
Dr. Bishop?
Through the President, those are some really, you know, great observations. And I, I would just like to, to state that when we talk about 20 years ago, bond debt reimbursement was 70/30. I mean, it was a, a different picture. We had discussions last year in regard to our energy efficiency and not taking part in, to some federal and statewide programs. And the reason that we hadn't in the past was because they were, you know, you could borrow money for 0% which sounds like a pretty good deal in today's economy. But 10 years ago, you could do those same energy-efficient renovations for 30 cents on the dollar when there was, when there was, so a lot of the, the landscape for why decisions were made at a particular time really did have to do with what was, what was the, what did the money look like at the particular time? What, you know, and, and I, it, it, it is different. And that's why we're having such difficulty, because it, it is more of an onus if a, a local bond was passed at 100% on local taxpayer dollars. And when we made decisions and we're passing judgment on decisions of former boards, former superintendents, former everything, communities about why they, at that time, that community supported changing Northern Lights from Northern Lights to another, and they supported it, and they wholeheartedly did. And it could have been one of the best deals they received from their state. You know, if you want to say, where does oil money go? Well, it goes into our infrastructure, right? So, you know, I mean, it, it is true. And if, and if we had other land, you know, perhaps we would use, you know, build another school and, and keep on to it. And that's just another layer of kind of analysis or use. It just didn't come into the picture of, the study that we did was the efficiency study to say, because the board had, had had many a time, schools come perform, close this down, keep this one, go here. And it was, let's just take a step back and use the data that the city did, although they are arguing against their own data. We're wondering where, you know, we, we talked about that, about where is the growth, and don't look just tomorrow, look 10 years, 20 years down the road. And, and that's what we tried to do to kind of bring more of a cogent plan back to the board about, about the future. However, at the same time, you know, our, our economy isn't as strong as it was in the past. We know bond debt will come back, hopefully, if, if it happens at, at least at 50/50. Decisions are made at the time of, like, where are we today with what we can afford, where we are with what we need? And so I don't know if that helps, but a lot of the decisions that were made in the past, we can understand a little bit of why they were made, when 30 cents on the dollar is a better deal than 0% interest on 100% of it, right? So sometimes we just make decisions based on where we are and what's available at, at that level.
Mr. Foster?
Let me help the vote counters out there. I think there's sufficient support for replacing the older schools to go forward. I concur that there's additional headwind, given the current economic outlook. And I think in my view, it's not driven by the new administration or the new legislature and their view of oil and gas and resource development opportunities. It's driven by the price of oil. And when I look at oil futures and go ahead and cast myself out through April, I agree we have sufficient headwinds that it becomes a consideration on how to package this particular set of bonds. If we were back at $70 or $80 oil, I'd be If we were back at seventy or eighty dollar oil, I'd be basically supporting the two schools. Given the current price and futures market outlook, I concur with the general assessment that it's probably not the time to take the risk. But it's, the, the driver really is, in my view, the price of oil.
Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. Um, you know, I share, share a lot of the concerns on rebuilding a new school, but I'm also very wary of putting money, um, into repairing schools, that I'm going to end up in ten years with a school that just still needs a ton of repairs. I don't think that's particularly wise either. Um, could you share, again, the numbers, um, on the costs projected? Right, I know they're not actual costs yet of Inlet View and Abbott Loop versus what the, um, maintenance expectations are over the next ten years?
Um, through the President, are, are you, um, talking about deferred? What we would put into deferred maintenance till we had an opportunity to rebuild? Or deferred, or is it the, um, scrape off? Like rebuild what, are, are you talking about fixing a school and trying to keep some infrastructure? Or just tearing it down and rebuilding it? Or maintenance that we would put into it prior to the ability to rebuild?
Sure. So, so my concern is looking ten years out, I would like to know the cost to repair them over, you know, when, or replace them, when we're, if that was the direction we went, so the replacement cost. Also, how much we will have spent if we don't do the replacement? Um, or how much deferred maintenance will still be there in ten years? So like for Abbott Loop, okay, we put the four million into the fire suppression, and I still have this long to-do list of maintenance needs on the building. That's where my concern is.
May, um, I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Why, why was that set date ten years out? Does the board believe that next year can't be another decision?
No, ten years is very arbitrary. I'm just trying to look for a long-term value. That doesn't have to be exactly ten years. But I, I believe Mr. Roth has those numbers.
I'm going to ask Mr., through the President, ask Mr. Fennessey to, to provide that data.
Through the President. Um, so for Abbott Loop, looking ten years out, taking into account all the potential deferred requirements and, and current deferred requirements. Um, in ten years, Abbott Loop will cost the district approximately twenty-three point three million dollars in deferred requirements. That's if we did nothing to the schools for the next ten years. For Inlet View, it comes out to fifteen point two million dollars.
Ms. Hildy?
And just to clarify, so in ten years, if you did those maintenance requirements, you'd still have buildings that were old and would need continued repairs, right? It's not like everything gets caught up at that point.
That's correct. That only includes a like-for-like replacement. So what the building has now, replacing that, that's what it would cost. It doesn't include any programmatic changes or, um, differences in educational specifications that we would want to upgrade.
Howard, does that take into account anything new that would arise in ten years that would have to be replaced?
That only includes what we programmed in terms of useful life of a, a component or a system.
Just, yeah. Just to, just to pose this to something, uh, so your, your question is, I mean, to be fair about the whole data, if we were to look at, so right now, we have a maintenance of, um, fifty-five million. Ten years from now, that's fifty-five on a single bond compared to, what's ten years from now, district-wide debt on maintenance? Because we're, we're, we're just selecting two schools, but consequently, we don't put money into schools evenly anyway. Do you see, so fifty-five compared to what the whole is, this compared to the ten years of two schools? Do you see what I mean? I, I think you would need to couch that in, ground it in a comparison. Ten years out, what would district-wide, um, deferred maintenance be? Because that's what we're judging this, these two buildings on.
Mr. Holloman?
And I don't know if I'm beating a dead horse or just chasing it further into the weeds with this question, but, uh, there are a couple avenues open, and let's, let's just use Abbott Loop as an example. Um, one is, we completely rebuild the structure, which means all deferred maintenance on that goes away, and we have a brand-new building. Two, we decide to maintain it in perpetuity by doing all the repairs that, that you would do to keep it open and safe. Um, but I've also watched ASD. Somewhere when they get the feeling that they may be three years or so from replacing a building, they stop doing all those repairs. Um, and you begin to let things go. And I, and I know this is a harder question to ask. Um, obviously, we're potentially being forced by the Fire Marshal to do something about sprinkler system. We can't defer that too long. Are there, there are things that are absolutely urgent that we're going to have to do versus things that would be a nice improvement to a building that, that we still probably want to replace if economics turns around? And, and I think maybe that's the pursuit of your question. Um, if we try not to sink any more into it than we have to with the idea that better times may come. Do you have any idea what that number is?
If, if, if I can, uh, through the President, just, just respond. Um, Tom has mentioned what, what we would anticipate, you know, a, a long-term deferred maintenance cost would be. But, but I would tell you, insofar as any, any school is active, if we have any component failure, you know, we won't let the, the mission of the school fail. You know, we, we do not, not do maintenance or replace, uh, items, uh, if we have school in session. That's just, so, so any of those unexpected, unanticipated costs, we're, we're going to take care of business.
Yeah, I think, yeah, those things are required. Um, but we also say, don't do upgrades. We don't expand the computer network, we don't add electrical outlets, we don't, um,
If I might, I, yes, yes, we would. I, I, in, insofar if, if, if it's the board's intent to sustain a school, um, without, without modification, you know, it, it's incumbent on us for, for, uh, to keep that school, uh, compliant with, with standards that are consistent in the district. So if it's IT upgrades, I mean, I don't want to speak for, for Mike Fleckenstein, but I guarantee they got Wi-Fi in Abbott Loop as an example, uh, likewise with Inlet View. So all these upgrades, insofar as it supports the educational mission, we are doing it.
Mr. Donnelly, did you?
Oh, thank you. Um, Tom, did the twenty-three point three for Abbott Loop, did that include the already-approved four point six million?
No.
Okay, so it's, and it, it's after the four point six. And I, I'm, it's kind of, all these costs, if two years from now, the legislature does not act and chooses to fund reimbursement at the anticipated fifty percent, wouldn't all these additional projects, these major maintenance projects be, if we put them on a bond, be available for the fifty percent reimbursement?
Yes.
So that discounts, you know, the, the argument, you got to compare apples to apples right here. I mean, if you get fifty percent reimbursement for building new schools, you also get fifty percent reimbursement for these kinds of projects also. Maybe. Well, it's either one or the other. Either you're going to get it for both, or you're not going to get it for either.
Mr. Roth, do you have, um, Ms. Roth, do you have more in your presentation that you'd like to continue or side out?
The only, the only two comments, Madam President, is going to, the, the last two bullets on the, the analysis is that people seem to be receptive to multi-year bonds. Uh, and then, you know, the, the voters do like choices. More, more bonds, lower cost. I would just say, you know, that, that, that shopping approach does have risk. It's oftentimes from a voter perspective, it's, I'll vote for one, but not the other. So if the board were to want to pursue that course of action of multiple smaller bonds, that would be a risk.
Is there any other further discussion on this amendment? Or, Ms. Mitchell?
So you may have addressed this already, but my concern is that, um, if we, I, I think Abbott Loop and Inlet View are in, you know, we've been there, we know that there are a lot of leaks. We know that there are a lot of systems issues there. And so if we did put them off a year, um, to Andy's point, um, then I think we are looking at putting some short-term money in, at least to keep people dry and our equipment dry, and, um, are we being penny-wise and pound foolish? I mean, I, I definitely understand that we want, it would be easier to put this to the voters if we know for sure that bond debt reimbursement has come back. But if at some point, um, it really just does not make financial sense to, to keep these buildings the way they are and continually put money into upkeep, that's my only concern, um, with taking them off right now.
I think I, oh, Ms. Hildy, oh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to share the, one last concern on, you know, we're talking numbers and finances and buildings, but what's happened is the principal spends a huge chunk of the day sending these requests for maintenance and hundreds of, I mean, I think it was like five hundred or something crazy at Abbott Loop last year. And every time he's working on these referrals, he's not able to serve his students. So whichever way we go, and I think there's a couple ways, but I hope that is, um, kind of our focus.
Okay, Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, there was a, a question in regard to Inlet View's capacity and, and lowering it. It did lower from two thirty-five to one seventy upon completion of a new capacity study in two thousand and fifteen, and the new capacity took place in two thousand and sixteen. And in reference to Tom's statement, um, there was, uh, an acknowledgement of classes for some, some, not all classrooms serve twenty-five people, twenty-six people. Sometimes in special education, they're smaller. So it took into effect, um, depending on the programmatic use of the classroom, uh, and that's when it changed. But at fifteen, sixteen were the years that it changed due to those programs that, uh, Tom Roth mentioned.
Thank you. You're welcome. I, I think that coincides when we started adopting the EAI and the FCI, the facility. I always forget what those stand for, facility.
Conditions is next.
Thank you, yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
When everybody else has had their, since I'm the mover of the motion, if I could do a wrap-up? When everybody else is.
Right. Ms. Snellie?
Um, I think two questions. Um, the first one is, I was going through the school viability study that Western Demographics presented back in April, and Inlet View continued to rank number one, which was not the good way. Um, in terms of it being the highest utilized, it's in the top fifteen under the twenty forty utilization. It's in the lowest possible EAI, the average age of sixty-one, and it's got the lowest school viability. That one makes sense to me. Abbott Loop doesn't fully make sense to me yet, because it doesn't even rank on some of those, because the way it was presented was the top, you know, the top quintant lower. Um, and so it just didn't quite fit in there. Um, what would happen for Abbott Loop if it came off? I mean, it did not have the planning and design, um, funds put towards it this year. What would its path be if that school got put off?
Through, through the President, um, the, 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 the district would continue to sustain that building to support the program.
We know that it has the sprinkler issues, and it has some hard deadlines associated with that. Do we know any of the costs to getting that issue resolved with it?
The, uh, the, the amount that has been approved to, to install a, a fire suppression system is three point nine million. So to, ba, again, based on what, what the board guidance is, and if it's to do that project, then, then we will implement to, to meet the, the, the standard of, uh, what the Fire Marshal is, has told us.
And we do have the funds for that already, correct?
To the President, yes, tho, those were approved in the last bond.
So without any further discussion, are we ready to take a vote? Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to, to go back over my points, most of which were made at the last meeting, um, the reason to vote for this amendment. Um, I really believe we should wait until we know the availability of school bond debt reimbursement before investing or spending over seven million dollars on buildings that may or may not be dependent upon that for taxpayer approval. Um, it's a huge factor to folks out there. Um, and that's about a thirty-five to forty million dollar difference. Without the state debt, uh, reimbursement, I think it's more economic to do remodels or do smaller needed projects at these schools than to tear them down and rebuild them. The district, uh, and by the way, these, if the reimbursement is restored, those smaller projects would be eligible for the reimbursement also. So that reduces the cost of, the projections for the out costs of maintenance. Um, I think the district, uh, should be considering other alternatives, um, such as transforming Central Middle School to a K through eight, if we, if you're strictly trying to address a capacity issue. But in regards to the overcapacity issue at Inlet View, it really does seem like a self-inflicted problem. Um, the, essentially, the entire number of the overcapacity of students could be eliminated if the students who are attending with zone exemptions from other parts of town going there, uh, weren't going there. And I, I think logically, no matter what happens today, we should put a moratorium on new zone exemptions at Inlet View for probably anything other than siblings or family members. You know, I see an exception for that, but we shouldn't be, if we're really at one hundred and forty-two percent capacity, we shouldn't be allowing more zone exemptions to go into that school, if that's the issue. In other words, there is the capacity right now for the neighborhood itself at, at, at the, at the current building, or very close to it. There may be, you know, a, a small amount of difference there, there's a variable. And this issue that it just recently was reduced, um, by almost seventy, the assessment of what the capacity is, also begs the question of just how dramatic is that overcapacity really? I think we need to consider that the voters are going to know that Inlet View's only nine blocks away from Central Middle School, which is at about seventy percent of capacity right now. And I think it's a very fair question to ask, why didn't you consider, you know, utilizing Central, the Central Building more, if you truly have an overcapacity at Inlet View? Um, the footprint land at both these schools doesn't really allow the size of building that's being projected to be a one-story building, um, at the capacity that, that we're shooting for, the, the plan is shooting for, so they require two-story buildings. And I have multiple concerns about two-story building projects for schools. First of all, I think a one-story school buildings are preferable, uh, to start with for, uh, folks with disabilities and mobility access. Um, it's a lot more convenient for folks that have, uh, um, those kinds of acts, uh, mobility disabilities to, to get around a one-story school. And so you, and these two-story schools are going to require elevators, which are expensive and, and difficult to maintain. They're costly to maintain when you, when you have those in a building. And it's also, a one-story school is much easier to get the kids out in an emergency. Uh, we have, uh, successful, very good, one-story building designs that have been very, uh, cost-efficient and are proven to be successful. Uh, the district possesses, owns those designs and can reuse those. Uh, I think there's three or four options there. But we don't have any two-story designs. And that probably says something about the preference for one-story to two-story historically and why it's better. But the current plan does not anticipate, uh, a new reusable two-story design. And I would think that the very minimum we'd want, if we're going to go into two-story schools, to have some sort of uniform two-story design with maybe options for additional wings or something, if you want a larger capacity, because I recognize these two proposed new schools have different capacity. The issue of code compliance at the two schools, um, my understanding is there's no safety-related code issues at these two schools. Um, if there were, they, our kids shouldn't If there were, our kids shouldn't be in there. But the code issues are real, but they seem to be for the fire suppression, seem to be related to property preservation rather than for kid's safety, for student's safety. And I understand that and that our kids are safe there now, and they have a way to get out, you know, if there was any need from these existing schools. I looked on our capacity charts, and I think there's two or three elementary schools close to Abbott Loop that do have excess capacity. I don't think it's enough to absorb all of Abbott Loop, but it does give the district some options, some ability to consider other options. If we examine some of those, you know, the capacity at those other schools, once again, I did not see an analysis that would say, you know, you could absorb all of Abbott Loop anywhere else, and that's not what I'm proposing. I'm concerned about the opportunity cost lost by tearing down existing schools rather than offering them to charter schools and then trying to find other locations or land to build new schools. Because I think it's been very successful with Aquarium. We've gotten, I think, almost 20 years of life out of that. And with the Boys and Girls Club in Spinard, that's another school that survived after it was supposedly obsolete. And that's a wonderful asset to offer the community or to our charter schools, which in fact, we have a state statute that says we're supposed to, if we close down a school, is offer them to charter, that building structure to charter schools. And that I would have liked to first looked for an alternative location. I know it's very tough downtown, I recognize that. But at least do an analysis if there was anything available just to build new on, rather than tear down a schools, which could be a very valuable community asset for decades to come, as the Aquarium School has been and the Boys and Girls Club in Spinard. Finally, this amendment does not mean these designs won't be done, because in fact, my proposed amendment for the six-year CIP plan includes these designs only two years out from now. So we will know by then whether the legislature is going to do bond reimbursement, and I feel that's the more appropriate time to put it on a bond issue. In fact, that's what my proposed amendment, I don't want to talk about a different matter before, but it directly relates, Madam President. I've actually proposed that in an amendment to the CIP plan, that these plans are on there, but they appear two years from now instead of this next coming year. And so it doesn't mean we're not going to do these and not do this design, it just puts it off for, well, it depends, that anticipates what the board does with the six-year plan. But there is the opportunity to continue to plan ahead to do these designs. So thank you for that opportunity to do a wrap-up.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Sure. Ms. Mitchell?
Sorry. Dave, one of the things you mentioned about making Central a K through eight school, I know that when I had a kiddo there several years ago, they had a lot of deferred maintenance there. Has that been caught up on, or are they still on the six-year CIP plan? Where does that stand?
Through the President. Central Middle School is an old school. It does have some significant limitations to it. We did, we did do, the board did approve a recent structural upgrade in Central that was completed a year ago. But, but I don't know, Tom, maybe you know what the current FCI is. There is a significant amount of deferred maintenance. It's a 1960 year group structure.
Did they ever get a new roof? Because it seems like that was one of the things that they needed. Or maybe I'm wrong about that. Anyway.
We'd have to pull that information. If it was replaced, it was long before my time.
Thank you.
So the only thing I'm concerned about is we keep putting everything, you know, we're putting these things off, waiting for the reimbursement to come back. If that reimbursement doesn't come back, that means what, we're still pushing things out and it may never come back? Or do we address these things? And so that would be my question to the board to think about. Ms. Hilding?
And I share, remember Marseth's concern on are we just going to keep pushing out? And if we have a need, let's share our need and be honest. But I also think that we have an opportunity to work on our trust in our community. And in two years, if we know yes or no on bond debt reimbursement, we can say, here is the picture, here's the full picture. And today, I can't paint that picture as clearly if I put the planning into this bond. Not that I don't think it's a fabulous idea of moving forward and getting, but I think it's a worthy goal to work on building trust before we come to the community for it.
Okay, we're almost an hour and 15 minutes on this one amendment, and we still have another one, and we still have the main motion to tackle. So at this time, I'm going to ask for the board to vote. So we are going to move on to the next one, which is to add $12,608,000 for priority school safety projects to the bond. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Foster?
I have questions for the CFO with respect to how much headroom do we have so that we can assure that the debt service on the bonds doesn't exceed the level of debt service that we have going forward so that the mill rate remains level or declining?
And I'm sorry, could I remind board members to speak back from the mic a little bit so we're better to understand how it's hard we've been doing the other, but, thank you.
Sure. Through the President to Member Foster. Our current, our current debt service this year was just over 55 million. Projected for next year was just a hair over 53 million. So with a $1.9 million space within, within to work, anything over $60 million will go beyond the 1.9 million difference on annual debt service payments.
Madam President, my target with this amendment was to try to include as much as possible for school safety projects within the listed on the CIP, the six-year CIP proposal, debt retirement. So I was wondering if the CFO could say, is this dollar amount at or below the projected debt retirement?
In order to clarify, when we look at the amount of the bond, it's like when you buy a car for $50,000, but your monthly payments are 6,000 a year, you don't pay it off all at once, so it gets spread out. Because we've been having smaller bond sales recently, because we have continued to lower overall debt every year for quite some time, we do have that spread where you know if you amortize the payments on a normal sale, assuming a refunding every two to three years, which is about average for us. That's what gives you that extra room for annual debt service payments. And right now between, this year was 55.8, next year's just over 53. That's what gives us the flexibility is the spreading out of the payments over the life of the bond.
Dr. Bishop?
I just have a question, Jim, just to remind everybody, refunding is like refinancing in the private world. So what is the market still beneficial for refunding?
For refunding, it is. In fact, I think everyone knows the Chairman of the Federal Reserve has indicated that they will continue to increase interest rates once the stock market balances out. It's gone through a little bit of repositioning recently. He stated just a couple weeks ago that he thinks the market still allows for some increase in interest rates. So what that does is actually make it pretty marketable to do a refund because it's a short-term refinance. It's not another 20-year bond. And for those who are trying, like this time of year, to offset capital gains for tax season, refunds are certainly an option. In fact, the shorter-term bonds right now are higher and more viable than long-term municipal bonds. We have a AAA rating with the municipality, so we're in much better shape than a lot of other cities. But yes, refunding right now is looking pretty promising.
Ms. Hilding?
I think I understood Member Donnelly's question. When we originally talked about changing the six-year plan that he had suggested was to get the safety and security up to that bond debt reimbursement limit. Does this $12,608,000 get as close to or over that amount? The idea is to use up to the amount for safety and security.
Through the President to Member Hildy. As I understand it, if my math is correct, Member Donnelly's proposal would have been somewhere just over $55 million. For us to have a zero increase in total annual debt service, we would be able to go up to about a $60 million bond. And it's difficult to explain, I realize that, because you look at, we're retiring 55 million, so why would a $60 million bond not be more? And the best way I can explain it is a house mortgage. You pay it off over 30 years or 20 years, and so the actual increase is not as significant.
Ms. Hildy?
Can you clarify what that number would be, pushing it closer to 60 million for the bond debt retirement amount? Are we looking, and I'm looking at these school security projects, closer to 17, 16.7 million or 17.9 million?
I did the rough math right before the meeting, and it was somewhere around 60 million. I could see that I was getting close to zero and that I knew it was going to increase, but I didn't do it by, like, by the dollar.
Madam President, is it where the thick line is on this sheet? The 12 million? Is that what you're asking? That's.
I was plugging in a completely different spreadsheet, trying to figure out what would increase annual debt service, not related, so I could validate that 60 million was that point where, when you exceed $60 million for the bond, that we would see annual debt service payments increased. So it was unfortunately two different questions.
Through the President, if I might just add to clarify, the line that you see on the list, that was intended to demonstrate, based on a 12.6 million increase, about where, given that list of projects, about where the district would anticipate running out of money. Again, these are rough order of magnitude estimates, but that was, that was the intent. It was just to showcase where that would potentially happen.
Yeah. Mr. Holloman?
And this is kind of a technical question, but it's one that has been posed to me, and I couldn't answer it. We're retiring debt that is being reimbursed by the state at 50 or 70%, but we're replacing that with debt that's 100% financed by Anchorage. Does that, so when we're making a statement to the public that we're retiring debt at about the same rate or slightly higher rate, but are we not taking on more responsibility in that process?
Through the President to Member Holloman. That's correct. Last year's debt, when we've been paying it off, was still somewhere, the last bond sale, we had about 41% reimbursable by the state. That is quickly going to, it's quickly decreasing, as the last two bonds we had are 100% taxpayer-funded. But, and I recognize why it's confusing, that if we pay off 55 million, that you could add 5 million more than that and still have the same annual debt service payment? And really, it's because there's a number of factors at play. We're still paying off a lot of old bonds that have state reimbursement. So it hasn't gotten to the point where all of our payments are just in the last two years worth of bonds. In fact, the bulk of our payments of all of our old bond debt of around $500 million is still the state reimbursable bond debt. So there's that lag in the several years from the time the state stopped debt reimbursement, plus we had one year with no bond at all, to where it actually starts overriding. In fact, it would be a significant amount of time before our annual payments would have zero state debt reimbursement. I haven't figured out next year if it's 41 or 40.3, or it may be a little bit lower, but it's with $500 million in total debt, it's, it doesn't change as quickly as you might think.
Ms. Hildy?
When we're talking about retiring debt, if we retire 50 million in debt, is that not 50 million that the taxpayers were charged, not the state's share of it? So it would be 50 million retired, 50 million added on, it's not?
It's a composite. We get tax dollars from local property taxes strictly for the intent of paying down bond debt. And so when we submit our annual projections to the municipality in March-April timeframe, they figure out the municipal taxes for the next year and the new mill rate, and it's all, that $55 million was not just local, there was corresponding state assistance with that. But we did pay off, as a municipality, because we physically write the checks, although they're electronic, $55 million and $80,000 over the course of the year.
Any further discussion? Mr. Foster?
I'll be voting no on the proposal because I believe it overweighted to safety and security projects and hardening the schools, and underweighted to ongoing deferred maintenance based on the pitch we've been making. And I would encourage our collective consideration of splitting the available space that keeps us under the mill rate. I don't want that mill rate to increase because I think we're responsible for making a very clean line there. And at least by my calculation, we've pulled about 7.4 out. That gives us roughly 16. I'm going to use round numbers, and I would split that eight and eight and go between safety and maintenance. I just feel like that's a better sort of mix for this particular climate and the potential to get the bonds passed and make a significant improvement in our facilities. Thank you.
Is that an amendment to the amendment, Mr. Foster? Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
So my understanding is that if we, at 49.8 million, we are actually going above the mill rate, is that correct? Or not above the mill rate, but we are going?
When you look at the actual annual debt service payments, if you look back just 10 years ago, we had $800 million in bond debt that we had to pay off. It's now just below 500 million because for pretty much every year, the intent has been to have less bond debt serviced at annually over the prior year, and it's worked to the tune of several hundred million dollars. When you look at the price of a single bond, it's actually sold over multiple years, and it's amortized over 20 years every time you sell it. So it spreads out that cost of the projects over a couple decades.
I think I might have asked my question wrong. In the memo that we got, it says that the amount of annual taxes on 100, well, basically that there will be an increase of about 5.2% with the recommendation that you guys have put out. So I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, Mark, or if you're talking about not having an impact on taxes or? So I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, Mark, or if you're talking about not having an impact on taxes or...
To respond to your question through the President, I believe I have asked that, let's call it $60 million. If we issue $60 million in debt, will that increase the mill rate? And I believe the answer has been no.
To clarify my statement through the President to Member Mitchell, it may in fact occur if the interest rates were to spike. We project bond sales off of 5%. We haven't sold a bond for 5% in quite a while. It's been much lower than that, but we try to give ourselves a buffer. So when you look at that outside interest rate, which 5% seems to be a very comfortable margin over the last several years, if it were to get to 5% and we were to sell at that rate, then at $55 million, it would be an increase of about $6.92 for every $100,000. For an average home in Anchorage of around $367,000, that would be $25 per year for the average homeowner. Obviously, interest rates do change. We still don't, do not expect it to get to 5%, but it is somewhat of a crystal ball. We message on the high side with a very conservative worst-case scenario, really, of about 5% because we haven't seen that in quite a while. But it's difficult to project what it'll actually be in April. Right now, the Hilltop Securities, the Muni's advisor, they're going from 3.5% to 5.4%. No surprise, right in the middle is 4.5%, which is where we really expect to sell it. But, you know, it could be 4.6, 4.7, it's just tough to tell.
Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
I'm sorry, so just to clarify, so I kind of know where you both have your heads at. Ms. Hildy, you're talking about going up to $55 million, so it's equivalent to what we are retiring. And Mark, you're talking about going up to 60, which is where we are still net zero. Is that correct?
Ms. Hildy?
No, I would like to go up to the net zero amount.
So up to 60?
I like Mr. Foster's idea of getting the deferred maintenance back in there because that's something we've got to kind of dig out.
So if that's the direction we would want to go, we would want to vote this down and come up with a new amendment or new motion, is that correct?
Yes. So what I would say is, right now, safety and security is top on our community and parents' minds, especially with what's given, taken place in the recent weeks. We heard from parents at Diamond that they would support any bond that had safety and security on it. We have several schools that are still not up to that safety and security level. I, and I may be proposing after this vote, an amendment that I'll make, that we add maintenance but still include some safety and security because I think that's what our public wants to see. So are we ready to vote on this amendment? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that the $12 million-plus is a very good investment in the school's safety and very timely. I'm a big supporter of deferred maintenance, but we do have a very good deferred maintenance component of this proposal as is. And this, it's almost a four-to-one ratio. This would result in security being a one and deferred maintenance being the four. So I still think there's a very, very healthy deferred maintenance component even after this amendment. And we're not reducing, we're not deleting any of the originally proposed deferred maintenance from this original proposal. We only made some room with removing the designs for the schools for some safety projects and safety funding. And I think the 55 is a good overall level because it's a safe shot, kind of in the mid-range, that we can go to the taxpayers and say, well, we're keeping it, we're not incurring any new debt above what we're retiring. And I think that's a powerful argument to the public. It's very complex, as Jim's, you know, pointed out to us for years, just how complex it is to guesstimate, you know, bond resales, how good a deal you get on those or what the interest rate's going to be. But the one thing that I think the public can understand is you're retiring this much debt and you're adding this much debt. And at this level with this amendment, you can make that argument to the public is we did not go above the amount of debt that we're retiring. And what we did do was we maximized, given the deferred maintenance priorities that we had in there, the amount that we could put into school safety. So I still support the amendment that's before us now.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I hear what you're saying, and I definitely would like this bond to pass, but given that we have so much deferred maintenance and we have 200 million less than outstanding total debt than we did, you know, not that long ago, I am planning to vote against this motion so that we can up it to 60. And I think that by having a significant number of safety projects on there and explaining to the public that that is a large reason for the increase, that that will hopefully allow us to sell the $60 million bond.
Mr. Holloman?
I'd say also in the state budget that was presented today, there's a substantial sum of money there for safety and security and education for projects like this. And personally, at the moment, I would like to see it laid at the feet of the legislature to come through with that. One of the things I think frustrates the public is when they see things that seem to them should be paid annually or out of an annual budget, go to a long-term bond. They have trouble with that. And I think a lot of these are immediate enough. It is a responsibility of the state, and it's in that budget. And I think we ought to push on them to make sure that Anchorage gets a fair chunk of that and then bond as we have to after.
Ms. Hildy?
I just think anything we've talked about, safety and security numbers, are just a small fraction of our need. So I can't imagine we wouldn't have other things to share with our needs. But I don't see these as short-term costs. In fact, I feel like we're very behind on, other districts have done these 10, 15 years ago. You know, traveling around the country, I visit schools, and these are very standard security features. So I don't see them as a short-term. This is what schools need, and students will continue to benefit over the long term from them.
And I would just add that we haven't even addressed our high schools or middle schools really yet. I mean, I think we have a committee still that is working on those things and making suggestions because it is such a complicated issue with, you know, just the number of students, entries, that sort of thing. And I know that our parents are looking for answers from the district. So I think that we will always have a need there for additional safety and security that the legislative can help us fund. But I think we have to address some of these, and again, I think our community is asking for that. So I'll be voting yes on this. Ms. Nellie?
I'm taking a look at the back page of this packet and just looking at the list of project scopes for some of these schools. And one of the ones that keeps coming up is a repeat, it says main entry, security upgrades. What does that entail?
Through the President. So when we're looking at a school and looking at doing security upgrades, we're focusing on four areas. The first being restricting access, so limiting it to one door. The second being positive identification of who's coming through the door. Then centralizing control. So you have your duress button, you've got your intercom system, you've got your door buzzer. All those centralized, you know, they look at camera systems, so that's centralized control. And the last is protecting the students and staff. So that involves, you know, hardening the building in certain areas. So when we talk about main entryways and securing those, it starts with the initial vestibule. So that includes the buzzer system, which has camera access, where you get the positive identification of the person coming in. It also includes the cameras associated with that, whether it be the outside at different parts of the building. It includes electronic locks on those so they can be done remotely and also at different areas of the building. So that's what the main, and that's pretty much the lowest level when you're talking about security upgrades, upgrading the main entryway. From there, you move on to where is the administrative area located in relation to that security vestibule, whether you just have to renovate it or you have to totally relocate it. Like, for example, at Inland View, the main office is in the center of the building, far from where you actually enter the building.
Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vennesev. That's excellent. And I would like to add a comment in regard to President Marsette and Member Holloman's comments. Mr. Roth continues to work with the safety and security needs of secondary schools, and the primary need at that level is additional cameras for blind spots in the school and upgrading all to digital. And my understanding is in prior bond surveys, what Mr. Holloman suggested about the life of a camera compared to the life of a bond. It's kind of a small change, if you will. And there will be a plan that we're working on with a team now to come back to the board for usage of fund balance for those smaller items where the need is the greatest at secondary school. There really are two different needs because of the age of the students. So I don't want you to think that we've forgotten about secondary schools, but their need is quite different than infrastructure. It is in those, I don't know, lesser lifelong items such as cameras. And so we have had great requests by our secondary schools for assistance in this area and on a secondary path in regard to fund balance, there will be a request coming forward so that we know that this is a balanced effort, but the needs are significantly different at this point because of the age of the child.
So I'd just like to add one last thing, and that is, thank goodness that the incident that we had in the parking lot at the school with the shooting was at a school that they were able to lock the doors. And it wasn't at one of our schools that didn't have that capability. So if there's no other comments, oh, Ms. Hildy?
I want to make sure we're all clear.
Okay.
So it's not that I don't support Member Donnelly's amendment. I just would like, if we vote it down, to bring an amendment to raise the amount. It would include his, but possibly surplus or a larger safety part. But it's not that, I don't want that part, I would like to...
So are you...
So I'll be voting against it, but not because I don't, I just want to include more.
Do you want to make an amendment to the amendment?
I think I would rather make an amendment to the main motion.
Okay. At this time then, I'll ask board members to vote. And that motion does not pass with five nay and two yay. So now, the main motion is on the floor. Do we have any amendments to the main motion?
Would it be possible to take a five-minute break to make sure I have the numbers accurate to make my amendment?
Where, if we can do it in shorter time, then that would be great because we're running behind here.
Or if you have them without taking a break?
Well, we probably need to take a break because Katie needs to get the writing.
Thank you.
So we're going to take a short three-minute break. I know, I know. I'm trying to make it quick. I do, I'm trying. I don't think it's going to happen. Right, yeah. Well, don't we have the six-year on this? No, we're postponing it. I don't even know what's added.
So this is what Dave Donnelly's amended. So... That would do it, that would be one additional roof. And that's probably about right. Unless you, the reason I would say that is the number of roof projects are somewhat saturating the market. So if we were to add additional roofs, I think that's problematic.
Well, we only have $5 million to work with if we keep all this. 12, 6, 4, 1. Oh, and 72. She wants it under that though. So we could do...
A boiler?
Yeah. That's a 3. Campbell Elementary in Birchwood.
So that's the combined cost estimate for those.
So this is Dave's amendment plus 3.821 deferred maintenance. Okay. And that gets us up to 72.
All righty.
Can you talk with Ken Linda maybe about some of the projects?
Me or Tom?
Okay. Or both of you? George was telling me what he probably shared with you about what Ivan Moore said.
Yes.
Ms. Hildy, are you ready with your amendment?
Thank you for that break. I appreciate it. And we were able to clarify some things, so I think it was definitely worth it. After talking and thinking a little bit more, I would like to make an amendment that's basically Mr. Donnelly's amendment with the updated number of 12.641, that only includes safety and security and not an increase of deferred maintenance. So he had a number that just needed to be updated a little. So my motion is to add 12.641 million for, for school safety projects.
Second. Okay, so the new amendment, do you have it yet, Katie? Hold on. Basically, Amendment Three is I move to add 12,641,000 for school safety projects. Is there any discussion? Ms. Nelling.
How is this different than the last one that just got voted down?
It's different by 30-something dollars.
No, thousand. It is the same one. After discussing with some people, I, I'm just choosing to give the updated number on safety and security of Mr. Donnelly's original amendment.
Board ready to vote? Okay, so now we're voting on the main motion. Is there any discussion on the main motion? The bond? The overall bonded, bond with the change, adding the 12,641,000 for school safety projects.
And taking off.
And taking off the design for Abbott Loop Elementary and Inlet View Elementary. Which brings the total amount to, does anybody have that number?
Is that 55.1?
55.
What is the updated amount, is that?
55.113.
Is that right?
Yes.
Um, that was the name.
Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Soon as she, soon as, sorry, she.
So it's the main motion as amended, and then I just updated the amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Because there's.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay. And that passes with seven yays and zero nays. Thank you, school board, for your advocacy and your hard work.
We have a bond.
We have a bond.
Next stop, December.
Next on the agenda is Memorandum 024, which I, if somebody would propose, what I'd like to do is move that indefinitely, or not indefinitely, but this doesn't have to be presented to the Assembly until March 30th, so we can put this off a little bit. So what I'd like to do, I think if we just table it, would be the best thing. Or postpone it for time uncertain. Okay? Any dissension on that, or are we in agreement? Yeah, we did. It was Mark Foster. Yeah, Foster, second in. Yeah. Yeah. So we're, I think if we're in agreement, then we don't need to vote. Everyone in agreement?
Everyone in agreement.
Okay. So at this time, it is 6:26. Adjourned.
You didn't even need to go to 6:30.
Mr. Roth, Mr. Henneson, Hennes, Hennessey, can't even think. George, thank you guys for everything. The dollar amount was different. No, it was right. Yeah. They're just saying, why did we vote on it again?
Oh, no, I think they were, they were thinking about going up there.
Yeah, I know.
Ivan, Ivan, who is generally wrong.
Uh-huh.